Okay, we're gonna go back to our thing, eighty-one Ps, we had none. Okay, site plan review for Platinum Drive.
Good evening, Dale McKinnon from G and H Engineering, and with me tonight Liz Canute.
I'm Liz Oldman, I'm from T E C Traffic Engineering.
Have we given, Larry, did you receive the traffic study?
Nope.
Alright, do you have a traffic study with you?
I have a couple of copies.
Okay.
I'm not gonna read it now.
No.
No.
Okay, Larry, you wanna go through your letter, please?
Yeah, the applicant Paulini Loom LLC requests site plan approval to construct a transportation terminal on the subject properties. Although the properties are currently zoned BP Business Park, which does not allow for transportation terminals, the land is still governed by the IB Highway Industrial Zone that has been frozen under Chapter forty-eight, Section six by virtue of the Platinum Park subdivision plan, has established Platinum Way as a street. That subdivision was endorsed by the planning board on eight sixteen eleven, twenty-eleven, transportation terminals were and still are permitted uses within the IB Highway Industrial Zone. However, the eight years of zoning protection lapses next month, on the sixteenth. I have reviewed the site plan and note the following deficiencies. Platinum Way has not been constructed and/or bonded for. Lots shown on Platinum Way, on the Platinum Park subdivision, have not been released. The proposed site plan ignores the platted layout of Platinum Way, which is my primary concern. The plan proposes parking lots to be constructed in the right-of-way of Platinum Way and provides no landscape buffer along the street line of Platinum Way. And as that writing, at the time of that writing, no traffic report has been submitted, obviously it's just now been submitted. So all the, until all of the above noted deficiencies are addressed, the site plan is not approvable, so I would recommend it be continued until, until next meeting. And Mike's letter is substantially the same, if you want to save time, read through it. The other, the other reviews are generally favorable.
Yeah.
You have before you also a recent correspondence from Attorney Roloff's reiterating the zoning freeze situation. But I think the crux of the whole thing is his, is the second paragraph of his letter where he thinks I'm confused, but I'm not. The last sentence in the, in his letter says, "The current proposal stands on its own, independent of the subdivision layout. Assuming Paulini secures the approvals required to proceed with the proposed transportation terminal, they would relinquish their rights to proceed with the previously approved subdivision and, if desired by the board for clarification purposes, would be willing to request a rescission of that previous approval." From my understanding of the zoning freeze provisions in the law, they should've requested a rescission, so you'd be holding a public hearing tonight to rescind the subdivision that created Platinum Way. So then their site plan proposal would be able to stand on its own because there would not be a right-of-way there anymore. So that's, that's my position, and I just discussed it before the meeting with town council, and he tends to agree, we agree with what Attorney Roloff's has said, and obviously there's all kinds of case law about this, but one of the court decisions was a three-to-two vote upholding the position the town council and I take, and that is that the way should be rescinded formally by the planning board before you can approve a sub, a site plan that ignores the right-of-way. If they wanna proceed with the site plan that they've proposed, we need to rescind the subdivision so there is no right-of-way there any longer. They still have a zoning freeze, and as it turns out, this can all be accomplished within the eight-year cutoff date because next month's meeting's on the thirteenth and the eight years runs out on the sixteenth. So it's possible to hold a public hearing next meeting to rescind the plan, in fact, that would be first on the agenda anyway, continue this site plan review until that meeting, and then once you rescind the plan formally at the public hearing, you could approve the site plan.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, Dale McKinnon again from G and H. Obviously, it's, that's a lawyer thing, and Jeff will have to speak to the town council about this, but in, I would still like to present this site plan tonight, you wouldn't have to vote on it, we've said that it wouldn't be, but I'd still like to go ahead and make the presentation of this site plan. Also have a traffic engineer to discuss the traffic study that she's performed for this site, so that we can at least explain to you what the site is about. And if it's necessary for the actions that Larry has discussed, we can provide that for the next meeting and continue on with this meeting.
I don't see any problems, because I'd like to see, if you're gonna come back the next meeting and you get a three-day note of the thing, timeframe, I'd like to see it so we can approve it at that time, rather than a problem, so if you could do your presentation and then.
Yes, so the, the site is located.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Any?
That's fine.
Okay.
Especially with the traffic engineers here.
Okay, go ahead.
So. I think, I, in terms of the traffic engineer, I would assume that she's probably gonna have to come back and that, I don't think it's fair, I mean, she could certainly give an overview, but I think it would be appropriate for Mike to review it and have questions and then answer them, so I don't know if that's gonna help us.
The question would be whether you wanted to hire someone to review it also, we have no objection to that. So it's anticipated that there would be this review, and if, if that was necessary, I think that can be accomplished.
Right, the town engineer can make that judgment.
Okay.
You know, I don't know what the report says or doesn't, or how much it gets into.
Very good.
So babe, is there question-answer after this, or just the presentation?
What's that?
It's the presentation.
Just the presentation?
Just the presentation.
No questions?
No.
No questions?
We can ask questions, we can ask questions, oh yeah, no, we can.
Okay.
We can go through, we just, we're not gonna vote on it.
No, I just wanna make sure that we get that.
So as Larry suggested, there is an existing subdivision on the site, or not an existing, but there is an approved subdivision for the site that is called Platinum Way, and it includes two commercial lots on that site. And what we're proposing to do, and that's, that's the existing site, so what we're proposing to do is provide landscaping for a four-hundred-and-eighty-one parking spaces that would be used by four-hundred-and-twenty Amazon vehicles. And, and so the terms of trips in and out, we'll let the traffic engineer discuss that with you, but in terms of the site, we have proposed lighting that's proposed for the site, proposed landscaping, all of this meets the planning board rules and the zoning regulations for the site. One of the items that was mentioned in the town engineer's letter was his concern about the applicants, or, excuse me, the residents along this end, and have suggested some screening be provided for that, and that would be certainly something that we could accomplish for the site.
So then, the, the four-hundred-and-eighty-one, that's the total number of slots.
Correct.
For parking, so.
That's a.
So that would be for two-hundred-and-forty vans and two-hundred-and-forty driver's vehicles.
No, the intent is to be four-hundred-and-twenty parking vehicles, and that's, that extra slough is what you allow for the in and out, and so they'll be taking over essentially the spot of the, of the van itself.
So where are they gonna park while they're doing that?
Well, that's, you have those extra parking spaces that we've talked about, those extra sixty parking spaces.
Well, so go back through it again, where you, you said four-hundred-and-eighty-one?
Four-hundred-and-eighty-one spaces.
Yeah.
And there's four-hundred-and-twenty vans, but not all four-hundred-and-twenty, and this will be discussed again by the traffic, would not be moving in and out of the site all at once, so that there's that extra sixty spaces that would be used in the interim while they're parking in any one particular.
How many get housed every night there, four?
Pardon me? I'm sorry?
How many get housed every night, four-hundred-and-twenty?
Four-hundred-and-twenty, yes, yes, sir.
So then it's gonna be key, which he gives the traffic analysis in cir, in terms of circulation time.
Correct. So what, this plan here shows the drainage for the site, we have a, a large portion of the site that's going to be underground storage. There is a small existing detention basin here. Under the original proposal, the, it was gonna be expanded, we decided we didn't wanna expand that, we're gonna use the existing detention basin, and we provided the extra storage that would be needed underground, so that we wouldn't have to go further out and closer to the wetlands during the construction for that detention basin. So we're gonna use, we'd have to clean this up, but that's basically, we're gonna use the existing detention basin on the site, and those calculations were provided for Conservation Mission and the town engineer for their review.
You're on time tomorrow?
The grading of the site is, is basically a, a two percent slope on most of the site going, going through, trying to use the existing drainage, this, there's a portion, some of you may remember, there was one time a building proposed back in here, and the, they had started to start constructing the drainage, so we tried to use some of that existing drainage, although we weren't able to use some of the biggest pipes that's closer to the wetlands and to the existing wall that's along that wetlands line. So again, like I've said, we have landscaping, we have an erosion control plan.
Going back to that, just to, what's the general direction of the, is it two percent up to the back, is that?
Here's your low point, your high point is up along the property line of the Route four-ninety-five. It just, as you're probably all aware, this, this is going to require blasting all along this left, all along this area, so there's a lot of blasting that would have to be accomplished to provide this proposed grading.
Is that a ledge cut?
Yes.
Is there any analysis, did you put in any analysis for that ledge cut?
In terms, in, I have not done a ledge cut analysis, but I'm not sure what you mean by that, by.
Well, we, we've had multiple cases, especially in, in this area, where someone says, oh, we're gonna do a ledge cut, it's gonna be at this, and then they go back in and the, and the stone is not stable, and we end up with, with a changed condition.
Okay.
So requirement of the board is that you do some borings to make sure you can actually do that ledge cut.
Okay, that would have to be accomplished then, because we know that it's ledged, we've exposed it, but I couldn't tell you the quality of ledge, whether that would, would give you some.
Yeah, you don't need, you're gonna need geotechnical analysis to say, yes, I can, I can go ahead and make this cut and it will be stable.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
What's the depth of the cut?
Back in this area, we're dealing with a cut of two-eighty-four up to three-oh-two, and in the middle, we're at the high spot, we're at that two, two-eighty-two up to, well, I guess the highest spot is at three-oh-four area, so it's basically a.
Twenty-foot.
Twenty-foot cut. Any more questions while I'm on the sheet?
Yeah, while you're on the, if you're gonna have a twenty-foot cut, you're gonna have an edge, you're gonna fence that off at.
Yeah, there is a, there is an existing property lining fence from four-ninety-five, but it's a cut, it's, you know, it's up on their side, so I don't think that we'd have to add an additional fence for that. So this is an erosion control plan, we're gonna have to have a, basically what the intent is, is to have a swale that's gonna intercept the, during the excavation of the soil and the blasting of the site, it's gonna intercept the runoff that would be headed naturally towards the wetlands, we're gonna intercept that and have sediment basins along that line of traffic, and that, and that'll be diverted into that existing drainage line that we're not going to be used, so that it could maintain a temporary use, at least during the construction portion. And we provided locations for possible stockpiling that are outside the one-hundred-foot buffer. This plan just shows the proposed landscaping for the site, we've tried to comply with requirements for the, for the planning, for the zoning requirements.
Amen, Mr. Chairman. With this particular use, and considering there was the other comments about plantings on the front, I would, I would entertain that we waive our requirements for the plantings within the area, considering I think it's gonna get plowed over, I don't think anybody's gonna really give a crap, and it's not a situation where we have, where it's a shopping center, that type of setup, and take those plantings, not to reduce the amount of plantings required, but take those plantings and move them along the edge as opposed to in the middle, because the other issue that we've had, based on our, on our, our requirements, is those trees tend to die anyways, there just isn't enough, enough area that they work.
So move them toward the southeastern end.
That, that would be, that would be my recommendation.
Along the trail.
And the, and the entrance way.
Right.
To make it look.
This entrance and along, and probably along some of this portion here, whatever's necessary to block out the.
Are you aware of Mike's?
Yes.
Comments on the traffic generation for the.
Right.
Okay.
So that, that's why.
Again, he hasn't seen the traffic reports, so.
Right, he, he was concerned whether it was a luple or not, and it, it is a luple, well, I'll have to confer with you. How many trips in and out per day for this site? It's four-twenty, is it sixteen-eighty?
It is sixteen-eighty.
All right, so one-thousand is the requirement to be a luple.
Okay.
So it is a luple.
Okay.
And this again, it's just the proposed lighting plan, locations of the types of lights, and location of the lighting. This is a photometric plan for the site, and then we've had the details necessary for the detention basin, underground detention basins, and there are no other utilities proposed, there's no water proposed, we have a proposed building that's ten by nineteen and a half, hundred-and-ninety-five square feet, so it would be under the two-hundred-foot threshold, and, and so, and then that, that has a purpose only for storage at this time. So there's no proposed water, no sewer, although we have those capabilities if and when we try to, if they wanted to expand that use.
Is there water and sewer that's on-site now? I mean, there's no sewer, because that's, that's septic system.
I meant, I meant, we did originally back when, we did septic test pits, so we have, so that we could do a septic system.
Is there water service on the site?
There is water out on the street, and we would have to bring that in.
No, okay, that's fine.
So that's, that's the presentation of, of the site.
Did you make any provisions for winter snow storage?
We have snow storage areas proposed on the plan, yes.
Can you show those?
Sure, let me show, those are on the landscaping plan, I believe. Oh yeah, they are, they are shown on the landscaping plan. Basically, it's between, we've got this set, set of trees along this area, and between the, the pavement and the trees along this area is where we propose to use, we've got other areas as, as necessary to, to locate, but it, especially if we take the vegetation and move it out, then we could use these island areas for storage if we needed to, but the, that's one of the reasons that we have.
That's not practical.
That doesn't, that's not, that's not practical. I'd rather see those.
Because you're gonna take up spots, is what you're gonna end up doing.
I'd rather see those trees that are on the, up against the wetlands on that, to the, yeah, right there.
Right there, yeah.
I'd rather see them move someplace else.
That can certainly be done, I think we've gotta work out the screening and, and whatever's necessary, we'll do, but that was the intent, was basically to use this area for, along in here for the snow storage.
If you had more area there, try to pile it in the center, it's ridiculous.
From the edge of the pavement to the tree line, what's the distance? How much usable space you actually have there?
All right, this is a.
I can't see any of it, so you don't have to tell me what the.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't print it up.
I know you didn't, that's why I can't, no, that's fine, I can't see any of it, so.
You can take thirty feet.
I can't see that either, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, twenty to thirty feet.
Yeah, it's gonna be about twenty, twenty-two feet.
Those parking spaces are nineteen feet.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. The first trees probably, to the center line is probably about nineteen feet, then it gets deeper.
Yeah.
And obviously, considering this, all this is, is a terminal, snow is gonna be of utmost importance in terms of remediation. So I'm just gonna speak out loud for a second.
Sure.
I don't think you have a large enough area for snow storage, and please don't come back with the baloney that you can use the center aisles, 'cause that's, doesn't work.
I heard you, sir, and I appreciate that.
With this layout, you're gonna lose almost all of the east parking spaces for snow storage.
Precisely. Well, to, to be honest, what, what may be the better thing to do is, when we get rid of the islands, get rid of the islands, bring the whole parking area somewhat smaller, because you get rid of the islands, I'm not, I'm not saying you can put any more parking spots in by doing this, but by widening out the areas around the edge, by getting rid of the islands, you can then give yourself some additional snow storage off the sides of the property, because there's, the islands are there only for us to.
I thought they wanted the aisles for, for lighting.
No, the islands are there because we prohibit more than twenty-five spaces in a line.
Right.
So every twenty-five spaces, you get a choker island that can serve multiple purposes, so if there's no planting in there.
I don't think the planting's gonna serve a purpose for what they use.
Well, that's what I'm saying, get ri, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying to do this so that you can fit more parking, I'm saying get rid of it, make the overall thing somewhat smaller, and use the outsides as areas for snow storage and the, and the plantings.
Right.
So what, you, the board would waive the strict requirement?
This member of the board is saying that, I think, I think it makes more sense, because I think it's.
I think it's the most practical approach.
Again, it's, it's not a bunch of shoppers going to, going to a local shopping center, it's people coming in with a vehicle, I don't think we need to worry exactly about the look internally, I think it's more important, the look externally.
We had the discussion in, in the office whether we would propose exactly what you're talking about, or whether we'd come with, we decided to go with just what's required, and then, I appreciate the discussion from the board now on that, on that particular issue.
The center, the center, the center lane, you have the lights in them, so you'll have to, you'd have to have them, but the other ones you can eliminate, and then eliminate the.
But you still wouldn't really need the islands, you could still have.
You could just.
You could, you could put it with a big baller.
If you wanna.
Right, there were four spots, you don't need the island.
You wanna bet?
Listen, I'm not, we're not the ones driving the van. They hit everything, they hit everything, anything else, it doesn't matter.
No, that's okay, it's, yeah, either way, I'm just saying, those lights have to stay.
Yes, the lights, the lights will still be there.
If you wanna.
I'm more sensitive to the.
Wanna roll the dice.
Residents to the right, that's, I'm more sensitive to them.
Exactly, yeah.
The practicality for what this is, not to continually ring the bell, but we hear it now, for those who live in the greater old stop and shop, the residents there, that on weekend mornings and even during the week mornings, it becomes somewhat disruptive, so I'm gonna tell you right now.
If I may speak, Mr. Chairman, my name.
I wasn't finished, but okay.
I am one of those neighbors, Debbie Zanella, I live at Re Eugene Circle, and can I, can I ask a question about the lighting? Are these lights gonna be on all night long?
No.
Yeah.
That's what they're there?
They should be.
Yes.
So you're gonna have a parking lot that's in darkness at night?
No.
No. No.
So.
But we can't lie to her, we, we all know that the lights are gonna be on, I mean, we can't.
And they're gonna be coming right in the bedroom window.
No, they'll be, they're down, they're down, facing lights.
They're all shielded, so that it's, it's not allowed for us to have, it, this, there's on the last sheet, there's what's called a photometrics plan, and we're not allowed to shed any light onto your properties off-site.
Is this, you've already cleared, there's, cleared every tree out there, I mean, the site plan isn't even approved yet, and you cleared every tree along the wetlands, took everyone down.
You'll come, what's your address now?
Re Eugene Circle. I've looked out at a pile of dirt for eighteen years.
Okay, just wanted to check, no, the, the lights will be down-facing there, and they are gonna come up with a plan, that's where we'd like to take the shrubbery and the trees that we're gonna move from other spaces and put them against, against your property, and that way.
Like all the Albert Weidey with the deer ape?
Well, they'll come up with a landscaping plan, and hopefully this.
We're trying to be sensitive to, we understand that the butt is to the right, we understand that the bike path splits you and, and then so on and so forth, I mean, we, I don't know exactly where you live, but we can definitely see, so what we're suggesting is, by them eliminating the center breaks, if you will, and pushing it back a little and allowing for more vegetation, that should hopefully shield.
Is the park on itself gonna butt way back there, or is it gonna be about sixteen? Is it gonna be out on sixteen, or out by the residences? Where the.
If you, if you. It's on the plan.
I know, she can't see the plan, she can't see the plan.
Okay.
Looks like the majority of it's along four-ninety-five, sixteen's, you could, you show where sixteen is.
The whole thing's sixteen.
Sixteen is here, four-ninety-five, and this is the.
That's, your house is right.
So we are.
Right at the end.
Right, the second one.
Second one.
In the middle.
So what they're suggesting is that the pavement be shifted away from the trail area, your area, and more plantings be moved over there, so in the middle of the big parking lot, there won't be plantings.
Yeah, then in terms too, now we have the noise of four-ninety-five, because every tree out there has been cut down. We bought that house twenty years ago, and the realtor that we bought it off looked us, we said to her, can anything ever be built back there, and she said, nope.
You can't rely on what realtor's telling you.
And then every tree gets cut down, so now we.
I wouldn't use that realtor again.
See four-ninety-five, here four-ninety-five, and now we're back this into the middle. So there's gonna be.
Just, I mean, this was always developable.
They could have a six-story building there.
This was already previously approved, it was going to be.
A building.
Two. Two, I'm gonna, I'm using the word office buildings. They were commercial space, so out of fairness, it was always land that was developed, developable, and previously approved. What, how many years ago? Almost eighteen?
Eighteen years.
It was eighteen, but then supposedly in two thousand and eleven, they slid another one through, but we were never even notified about it.
No. I can't speak to what your realtor said, I just.
Yes.
No, no, I'm talking about the plan.
The subdivision, you were notified.
There's no, there's no notification on the site plan.
There isn't.
No subdivision plan.
They were notified of the subdivision, the definitive subdivision plan, so, so anyway.
My concerns, I have two big concerns, like you said, along the rail trail, it shows no screening at all, right now, it shows spaces right along that rail trail. Our house is up, we're on a hill, we're on a rise, our house right now is higher than the land that's there, so if they're going down again, twenty feet, last time they blasted, I had to have my house replastered, and I still get water, because the waterproofing that they tried to fix my house with didn't work, because they said, A, we didn't do any damage, because we didn't go over legal limits of the blasting. Our insurance company said, to fight Fafford, with his deep pockets, we're just gonna fix your house, once they fixed our house, they dropped us, and my premiums have gone up since then. He's gonna blast again, I'm on a vein, I know I'm gonna get more cracks, I want somebody to do a pre-blast inspection, I would like somebody to do a pre-blast inspection and hold them to a standard that if I have any more cracks, any more damage to my house, that they're gonna fix it, not my, come out of my pockets again.
That is the fire chief, and he has, they go in, I don't know what the distance is, but the fire chief, by the rules of the fire code, they have to go in, they have to videotape.
We did that, we did that, and they said it, Fafford said, and the bench engineer said, because we didn't go over certain standards with, by the state.
They could have been possibly causing that.
They, they weren't responsible, but yet I had none, and I had over a hundred when they were done the first time. I have the videotape still to this day, but yet it came out of my pocket. Now they wanna blast again, another twenty feet, and then my third, my first concern is the screening, my second concern is the blasting, and then how many days a week are people gonna be going in and out of this? If they're gonna be going out on a Saturday, Sunday, I basically can't use my backyard, ever. If you're telling me that they're gonna be moving, I mean, I'm gonna be listening to traffic, car doors, power alarms, I might as well sell now, 'cause I'm never gonna be able to use my backyard, if they're gonna be able to use this twenty, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Wow, and we will be able to look right down.
We will, and you come, you come there, I We will, and you come, you come there, any company wants to come over for dinner, I'll cook you dinner, you can look out the back window, and you can see what we see.
You get laid by the pool and listen to the.
You know, my yard is basically used now. And that's gonna be on my property value, and I mean, why, it should have a reassessment then, if that's what I'm gonna have to look at and listen to twenty-four seven, seven days a week. And if it was an office park, it'd only be Mondays through Friday, and then I still have my weekends, and I still have my yard to myself, this is gonna be Saturday and Sunday. I don't have any privacy, I won't have a yard, I won't have a house. It might as well be the Taj, or the Blackhead, or whatever it is, I, I, it's not a house anymore, I'm gonna have this twenty-four seven.
I, I don't necess- until we hear what she's gonna say in terms of traffic, I, I don't know if it's twenty-four seven, I, that I don't know yet. I'm not splitting here with you, I don't know that yet, until she gives a traffic study.
Yeah, and.
I don't believe that Amazon's running a twenty-four seven.
They're doing it now.
Hold on, hold on, let me finish, in terms of the delivery, the big trucks come in at night, yes, but I don't know if the delivery vans themselves, I don't know that, I, just saying, I don't.
And is there gonna be?
Where Stop &amp; Shop is now, where they're storing them, they got pulling out there on Sunday mornings. Cuz I go.
They're seven days a week.
They're seven days a week.
I know they're seven, I don't know if they're twenty-four is what I, is what I said, seven days, I know they're running seven days.
Is it just vans, or is it eighteen-wheelers as well?
No, here, this is for vans.
Yes.
Dale, you understand, you understand their concerns.
I do.
Especially where it comes to the buffer, and the type of vehi- uh, agitation that you're gonna put in.
The issue is where they're up on high, that, that, that'd be an issue that I think, I've gotta, I've gotta visit with them, and see their condition, and see what we can do to address that issue.
Good.
So what was your address again?
Re Eugene Circle.
And, and the last name?
Zanella.
And you're on this plan?
Yeah.
Should be.
Thank you, yep, Vincent and Deborah, right?
Yep.
I'll, I'll call you tomorrow and see about making appointment to come over this time.
So you wanna do the? Do you wanna do the traffic now?
Just have to wait and.
Just some of the particulars, I'm just curious at this point, she's here, I'd like to hear some of it.
So you do the traffic?
I'd like to hear some of it.
Just a quick synopsis, again, it doesn't do us any good.
Doesn't do us any good, cuz we haven't seen it.
And Mike hasn't seen it, that's the.
I can at least give you kind of a general idea of the traffic. So again, the site is, uh, four hundred and eighty-one spaces for four hundred and twenty vehicles, uh, with one access on to East Main Street, full movement access onto that roadway. The information we received for trip generation was empirical data from the end user, which is Amazon. This is not a standard ITE, um, Institute of Transportation Engineer land use, they don't have parking lot facilities in their manual, so we relied upon data given to us by the end user. We were informed that shifts start at seven-thirty in the morning to ten AM, and drivers arrive evenly between seven AM and nine-thirty AM, with fifty delivery vehicles leaving the site every half an hour, between seven-thirty AM and ten AM. So what happens is, fifty passenger vehicles enter, the personal vehicles of the driveway, drivers, they come into the site, they pick up a van, they radio to the warehouse, the warehouse gives them a, a time to be at the warehouse, they leave the site, they drive to the warehouse on Industrial Road, they pick up their deliveries, they go out and make their deliveries. When they're finished, approximately nine hours later, they come back to the site with the van, and they leave in their personal vehicle. So, during the peak hours, you'll have a hundred trips entering, and a hundred trips exiting, that's a hundred personal vehicles coming in, in an hour, and a hundred vans leaving, and the evening, those hundred vans come back in, and a hundred, uh, personal vehicles exit to go home, so.
What, what are peak hours?
Um, one hour in the morning, generally between seven and nine in the morning, and then four and six in the afternoon, that's when the traffic on the adjacent street system is usually the highest.
Cuz if they're staring fifty per half hour, it's greater than a hundred from seven-thirty to nine.
Right, but it's one hour, like I said, we do a snapshot of one hour, the highest four fifteen-minute periods between seven and nine in the morning. So, so in this area, it could be from seven-thirty to eight-thirty, I don't have, I can get all that information for you next time, I wasn't prepared to give you like an in-detail report, but I certainly can.
Well, I can tell you seven-thirty, they're pretty active, I can tell you at nine-thirty, they're pretty active, they look like a swarm of bees coming at you, they're hard to miss.
Right.
Never sat there and actually counted them?
Well, they're.
I'm gonna say, let me just finish, I think it's exceeding fifty in, in that time slot.
That is what they were telling me for this, this particular site, and then they, again, they have another shift that runs between eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty, so the latest, um, the latest vehicles exiting the site will be at nine-thirty at night, and the earliest would be seven o'clock in the morning, so seven AM to nine-thirty. So it's not twenty-four hours a day, but it will be seven days a week.
So the nine o'clock exit, what time do they return?
The nine o'clock in the morning exit?
I thought you said night at night.
Nine at night, that's the last, uh, pa- personal vehicle leaving.
That's when they go home.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have, I just have a question, what happens is the vans all hook, hook on to one another, so no one can seem to get out, like, uh, the first van, and then someone comes in, the second van, and there are like a stream of vans, and then.
Possession.
And then, and then, we, we can't, no one else can move at that time, is that gonna continually happen, I mean?
Some of the, uh, some of the vans that are at the shopping center will move to this site, not all of them, there will be, still be some kept at the shopping center, but, um, these are new, we use them as new trips on the roadway system to make sure that we were conservative, um, but my understanding is that some will be relocated from the shopping center.
When you say some, is there a number, or?
I don't know that number, I don't think that they've figured that out yet.
So.
So they're adding more trips, is what you're telling me, in fact.
That's what they're doing, yeah.
Now you have to go back to the original site plan of what they actually asked for, because they're exceedingly higher
Right.
than what they initially came in for those years ago, so.
So.
You, you, you're opening up Pandora's Box here, in my two-cent opinion.
Well, I assume what you're saying is they did the counts now based on what Amazon is already, is already producing in that area, and they're now adding in
Right.
fifty, a hundred, a hundred more vehicles per hour on the existing counts, which already includes Amazon, so if in fact, they move some of the ones from Stop &amp; Shop to here, the, they're actually overstating the amount of traffic, so if they make it work with what's there now, then it, it, it should be overstating what's actually gonna be there.
That's what we tried to do.
They didn't go back to, they didn't, they didn't go back to what Stop &amp; Shop and say, this is what we're doing, they took counts now with Stop &amp; Shop producing whatever it's producing out there, they've got new counts on sixteen.
Correct, we have counts from last month on Route sixteen, we studied.
Just out of foolish curiosity, what's the prefer, what's the preferred exit plan when they leave that new site? How will they travel to Industrial?
The current.
No.
Yeah, or the, the thought for the route would be to exit the site, left on Beaver, which is not on here, but left on Beaver, right on to, uh, Meadow.
Medway Road.
Med.
And then meet at the light.
And go down to.
So.
Beaver Street's gonna have to be a full name, you can't get there now, you're gonna have to four hundred more vehicles.
Not a good one, certainly, no.
You can't.
No.
It's gonna be every day.
So, uh, we did do capacity analysis at the study area locations in the no build, and then the build condition in the future, and there are some, generally, the intersections operate with good levels of service in the peak hours, with some specific movements that operate with over-capacity conditions, um, in the, the various peak hours, that the, they are existing levels of service F, that the addition of the site-generated traffic does not specifically create those conditions, they will exacerbate them. Um, so, part of our proposal is to make improvements at the traffic signal of Beaver and East Main to add, um, some phasing and timing, um, changes, and then at the intersection of, and then to work with the town, um, at East Main and Medway, and Medway and Beaver, and Medway and Birch, to implement, uh, traffic signal timing changes to, uh, should the delays be realized in the future. So these are projections, um, we understand that sometimes we're very conservative, so the, the actual delay changes don't occur, um, but we're willing to work with the town to make those timing changes, um, and mitigate any impact that we have on those signals.
I think the lights at, uh, Medway Road and Beaver Street, the state, uh.
Correct, so we would have to work with the state too. I believe that we will need a state access permit to get for the roadway, um, so, we would have to work with that, you know, work with the state and, um, apply, abide by their conditions of approval. So, in general, the traffic that is generated by the site can be accommodated on the roadway system with, um, some minor modifications to the signal timings, it doesn't significantly degrade the levels of service at the intersections, um, so that's generally the answer, that's generally what the report finds.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, uh, well, we got other things on the agenda.
Yeah, uh, again, we, we, it, it's just something we wanted to hear a little bit about, Mike's gonna go off, go through it, and he'll get, uh, back with you on that.
Any specific questions?
Yeah, one per, so basically you're telling me it's seven-thirty in the morning till nine at night, seven days a week?
Correct.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
So Dale, so Dale, are you, uh, gonna consider, uh, coming back tomorrow or the next day to, uh,
Are you willing to put a schedule on the weekend?
Submit the request for the rescission of the subdivision, so we can do the hearing next time?
I would, I would suggest to my client that we do that, exactly.
Cuz we can do that.
Right.
There's just enough time to get all that done, and, and that would, uh, address my major concern.
Okay, don't you own the property of that street, or is that your brother?
Re Eugene Circle?
Oh, yeah, I think my brother does, yeah.
So my, my house is now, basically.
I hear you.
I'm not, I have no equity in the house now, I'm not, it's.
Well, we can't even say, because everyone's gonna say, what's going on?
So you wanna continue till next meeting?
Yeah.
The parking spaces go right up to the property line, right up to the property line.
Sir, we've asked him to come back with some changes, it's not that we're not hearing what you're saying, but Dale comes back with some changes, there's nothing more for us to say to him, we've asked him to make some changes, we've asked him to put in some, you know, plantings that are trying to shield you.
Can the planning board make some changes for the weekends, so I can enjoy my own house?
It's a transportation depot, it's, it's an allowable use, there's nothing we can do. There's nothing we can do, I'm being honest.
You could do.
Yeah, there's nothing.
You could look at Burm.
Yeah.
Put them on their property.
Yeah.
Put them on their property. That works for them, yeah. They're not the only ones over there.
We're gonna try to work as much as we can to make it as, think, little bull. Again, we don't. Again, we go by state by law, so what we can do, what we can't do, so.
I think, I think if Amazon should be a good neighbor to these people, and the people that live there, that's a very important question that I have, is that when you go back there, and Amazon looks over their closeness to these, uh, homes, that maybe, uh, him being a, that, that company being a good neighbor, could do something for them, in whatever capacity.
I mean, the.
I know it's not realistic, but you know what?
Something.
My other concern too, is that I've seen them over at the old abandoned Stop &amp; Shop, and they get off work, and then they're all hooting and hollering, and you know, talking it up before they get in their cars and drive away, and I don't need a twenty-four seven party.
They're very inconsiderate, I don't disagree.
Well, I'm aware of that.
I've been dealing with them for a great many years, I, I don't, there's nothing that you're saying that I don't disagree with, that's all I'm gonna say.
All right, let's move. Okay, now, some, motion, Pat, did you make a motion?
Yes, to the thirteenth of August.
Uh, second.
Continue this.
Seconded by John, any further discussion? Not, all those in favor?
Go to the town hall.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, amended site plan for One Industrial Road.
Let me just read through this quickly, the, uh, this is amended site plan, Sierra Naturals, One Industrial Road.
Larry, and read.
Yep.
Yes, Larry, thank you.
Lena.
Lena.
Moving along.
One Industrial Road, the applicant requests amendments to the site plan previously approved and currently under construction on the subject property.
Use them then if you don't like it. Just keep going, Larry.
Uh, the approval was to construct an approximately twenty-five thousand three hundred and eighty, three hundred and eight square foot greenhouse structure on the subject property for the purposes of indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana, the proposed cultivation use is permitted in this zone because Sierra Naturals was licensed or registered by the state and approved to operate in Milford prior to July one, twenty seventeen, as a medical marijuana treatment center on their primary site at Thirteen Commercial Way. Specifically, the proposed changes include the addition of a twenty-five by fifty-foot mechanical room to the west rear corner of the existing structure, as well as a, uh, reconfiguration of the parking area, dumpster locations, and transformer pads. Also proposed is a three hundred and twenty-foot, approximately three hundred and twenty-foot long retaining wall, uh, varying, uh, in height, uh, up to approximately ten feet, uh, for which engineered plans had been submitted. Uh, the infiltration basins north and east of the building are also to be modified and expanded. All applicable zoning and site plan requirements appear to be met, therefore recommend approval subject to relevant agency comments. Mike had, um, four items, uh, that he noted that I believe have been addressed. Uh, all the other, uh, agencies have favorable reports, uh, the fire departments, requirements. Had, uh, I believe their, uh, changes in, in pipe size have been, have been addressed as well. Uh, highway was fine, uh, water had their standard letter with some changes that have also been shown on the plan. Take it, Mark.
Uh, Mark Allen, Allen Engineering Associates, here representing, uh, Sierra Naturals, uh, in accordance with Larry's description.
Mark Allen.
I'm, I'm, sorry, Mark Allen.
I'd hope they'll sound like Charles.
Charles, you wrote.
Or something like that.
Again, for you, uh, just a modification to the, uh, the site plan that was originally submitted and approved, as Larry indicated, uh, the majority of the, the changes have been due to, uh, mechanical, electrical, and, um, plumbing changes. Uh, some of the roof, um, infrastructure couldn't be supported on the roof, so they wanted to do it outside, they added a small twenty-five by fifty-foot mechanical room to the existing building, and, uh, subsequently, all of the, um, utilities that service the building, uh, really got a hard look at exactly where the pads needed to be to service the building themselves. So some of the parking, like Larry said, just got moved from right up against the building to a little bit further away from the building. Uh, we did go through those, uh, letters that Larry indicated, and the, the water department and fire department indicated that a six-inch main from the street be added, as opposed to the four-inch main, which we're more than happy to accommodate. As well as the, uh, the retaining wall that's kind of shown here in dark black, that's sort of the biggest civil item that was addressed between the last submission and this. of the biggest civil item that was addressed between the last submission and this submission. That retaining wall has been structurally designed by SVE, civil engineers, and that wall ranges in height from zero to about eight feet at its max. So, that, that retaining wall is shown in this location here, and based on your bylaws, and deservedly so, anytime a segmental block wall is proposed, that the proper banner be considered, and that the civil works with the structural, to make sure that the plans actually represent what's gonna be built. So, we did accommodate those for you as well, and adequate access around the building, and the new rear outdoor mechanicals shown in this location here were the, the other big civil item that we, that we wanted to show to you tonight. The other items that Mike mentioned in his, in his letter, that the chain link fence along the top of the proposed retaining wall, we added to the plans, we did add a detail that showed exactly what was going on with that retaining wall and the chain link fence. We did call it out to be a six-foot tall chain link fence, and that on the top, along the retaining wall, have visual slats placed in it for, for privacy purposes, and that would be in this location here. The other items that were also modified were the guardrail that is actually broken right now in between this location here, that's actually gonna be proposed to be reconstructed, so it's that continuous guardrail beat all along Industrial Road. So, that has been added, and the 100-year floodplain elevations have been added to the grading and drainage plants, as well as the volumes. So, we, we addressed all those. The one thing that we didn't do, I guess, is number two, the retaining wall design plan should be made part of the site plan. It is a separate civil structural item, and you do have the package, I'm not comfortable taking on the liability of a structural engineer, so I request that the board just have two separate sets of plans.
Well, what he's asking is that you physically staple them to the set of site plans that you submit.
Oh, okay.
You don't, it could still be stamped by the structural, we just wanted it on.
Yeah, just, just package them as one set.
Oh, sure, absolutely. So, in a nutshell, that's, those are the, the changes that we have before you tonight. We will go back to Conservation Commission tomorrow night, as the basins have been reshaped a bit, same elevations, same depths, but slightly different locations.
Are you putting the fence behind the block wall?
On, on top of the block wall, so on the street side of the block wall.
It's a drop from the street down to the building pad.
So, if you see sheet.
Roof elevation almost meets the street, Joe.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at the detail and saying, where are you putting the post?
Yeah, it's on page seven of seven.
Correct.
There should be a, on page seven of seven.
Those were the initials, Larry, I'm sorry, these were after Mike's letter, so.
Oh, so, it's not on there?
These plans have them on there, those plans do not.
You wanna see it?
Yeah.
Get that.
They don't have them on here, too.
Yeah, behind, that, that's what I meant, because I was, I was worried, most of the times, they won't let you put it unless you, unless you do a concrete cap, they're not gonna let you put the fence there.
Correct, yep, so we're gonna go, we're gonna go.
There, that's fine.
Exactly.
Right. Recommend approval.
The water service, it's four-inch now going in?
Yeah, and the fire department made, made us change it to six inches for fire.
Okay, there is a moratorium on digging on Birch, on Industrial Drive, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep.
You are correct.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to address that.
Yeah, you need to talk to Scotty.
There's an eight-inch main going up Industrial Road.
They pulled from.
They pulled a four-inch tab, they pulled this.
They pulled a four-inch stub in, and they, they went cheap instead of.
Yeah.
At the time, I don't think they realized the marijuana place was going in there.
I would never do it.
I didn't do it.
For an industrial building, I'd never pull a four-inch one off anyways, so, yeah, that's a, it's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, we'll have to approach the selectmen for that change, absolutely.
Well, highway survey.
Highway survey.
Highway survey.
Right.
It's his jurisdiction.
Any other questions by the board?
No, they should get that strained out, so we know what they're doing, though.
Yeah.
Make sure Scott's okay with it, that they can get a herb cut.
Is there, is there a switchgear going in that building, is that one the?
For power?
A switchgear for the electrical?
Yeah, there's all sorts of exterior switchgear going on outside the building before it gets inside the building.
That was one of the, the addition.
There's gonna be a transformer and a switch, a switch outside.
Correct, absolutely.
There should be a switchgear inside.
Yeah, that, I'm unfamiliar with that.
I'm just, I'm just asking for curiosity.
Sure.
Again, that's the electrician's, that's the electrician's job.
Not from the building outside.
No, I understand. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
There you go.
I don't know how we wanna handle it, I mean, I'm okay with that, provided we get, we get, we're okay from.
I'd like a continuation until.
Until we get the letter, that's fine.
We get the letter from Scott to say that you can put the, because the fire departments aren't gonna let you do what you're doing with all the six-inch line.
Sure.
And Scott reviewed it before that change.
If I'm not aware, that, yeah, what's not.
Well, continue this till the 13th as well?
Yep. Can I get a motion to that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to continue to the 13th of August.
13th of August.
Seconded by John?
Theoretically, they could pull it from Birch.
Yeah, either way, whatever they show is fine, you know, I don't pull it from.
They show us which way, put it on the plan, I don't care.
I mean, I think that's the only thing you need to do, is just clarify, where are you gonna get the water, how, if you're gonna go from Industrial Road, you're gonna move it from Scott.
Sure.
You're coming from Birch, then you just gotta tell us that's where you're coming from.
Okay, but moved and seconded to continue to the 13th of August. Any further discussion? Or none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Moving right along.
Is there, is there a meeting in August the first? Is that the first?
That's the only one, that's the only one.
The only one, the 13th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving right along.
Okay, let's see what we got.
Agenda item five, site plan waiver.
Site plan waiver.
Maria Chigana, 4246 Main Street, the applicant requests waiver of full site plan approval for the change of use in one of the units on the subject property. Specifically, the applicant proposes to change from the former dental office to retail sales and service in the unit that's actually addressed as 6 North Bow Street. The proposed change will only affect approximately 800 square feet of the first floor, and I have indicated the location on the attached sketches. There will be no increase in the required off-street parking, in fact, there's probably gonna be a reduction. There are also no alterations to the structure that are necessary. The space is being proposed for use as an Herbalife product store, with sales and display area, as well as possible use of a small classroom space. All of the agency comments are favorable. As you get toward the back of the packet, the last three sheets, specifically, there's a floor plan that shows the area off North Bow Street on the first floor, it's literally right across the street from us here, on the corner of Main and North Bow. There's a sketch that Mr. Patel had submitted that came from the assessor's office in terms of how they've readdressed the site, so even though the legal address for the site's 4246 Main Street, they've got these other mailing addresses assigned, and this particular unit's the corner one here on, on North Bow Street. So, it's just a simple change of use authorization. The existing parking is the lot that's actually, to, in the rear of the property, as you can see on the last page, the aerial outlines the, the actual property that's, that goes with the building, so the parking is actually way in the back. So, I'd recommend approval as submitted.
Wait the site plan. The only thing I would have comment on is perhaps some form of a sign for notification that there's parking out back, I don't know that that exists.
Parking in the rear?
Or some, some sign, there's, you know, parking for business, the only reason why I'm saying it, especially as it gets to, if they actually have classes, some form of classroom, that, that presents you with, I don't know how many, four or five people, multiple cars at one time, there is no street parking available out there, we're either gonna have people parking in the town hall, parking lot, or whatever, and, and we should make them aware that, in fact, there is parking available, so other than that, I don't have any other issue.
That's a good point.
Yeah, well, I don't know how long ago it was striped, but.
Yes, we have a 25 by parking in the back, and mostly it's empty like that, until they can't.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm saying it would be, it would be good to have a sign at the entrance to say parking for businesses or something.
Building and change the parking in the back.
Yeah. Other than that, I don't have any issues.
Move, you seconded then?
Yes.
Yep.
Seconded with the, moved with the stipulation they put a parking in the rear sign up on the building. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five, thank you.
All right.
Okay, we got number seven.
I had put together a list of 17 town-owned parcels that are in the headwaters of the Charles area, north of 495, and east of the Holliston line. Attached a couple of maps that, that show where the parcels are, they're, they're currently town-owned, but they're not under Conservation Commission jurisdiction. I would recommend that you put this article on the Fall Town Meeting warrant to, to do just that, that recommend that, or ask Town Meeting to put them under ConCom jurisdiction. Where ConCom meets tomorrow night, I was gonna hold off and, and put it on their agenda at their next month's meeting, pending the outcome of tonight, but I was assuming you would support doing this.
Just a quick question, Larry, is it to be their article or our article?
I would suggest you co-sponsor it, but it doesn't have to be, but typically.
I, I have no reservations in, in thinking this is a favorable, something that should occur, I just question if the planning board should be the mechanic behind it or the conservation itself, my only real technical question.
I would think conservation would.
Again, I have no objections of supporting it, I just think that it'd be better suited for they, for them.
Well, they, yeah, if they wanna sponsor it by themselves, they could, I just assumed you would wanna, as a board, would wanna co-sponsor it.
No, 'cause that involves us having to get up and defending it, I prefer them to do it.
Well, that.
That's all, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, that's up to.
I don't know how many articles we have, maybe we don't have any, but.
Well, we don't have any yet, but.
But, that's my point, why should they be inundated with, with articles that, you know, directly will benefit, I mean, obviously, the town as a whole, but it falls under their jurisdiction, it does not fall under the planning board jurisdiction, is my only.
Yeah, again, I got no problem backing it up.
Yeah, no, I support it, I just, I prefer them to.
I just felt that the planning board, where this is a, a, a primary item in the comprehensive plan, that made sense to do it.
I mean, I have no problem being, being a co-sponsor, but I, but I at least believe that if, if they feel it's critical, they should take the lead in making the presentation, but I don't, I don't care if we're the co-sponsor, but if they're saying, oh yeah, if the planning board goes ahead and does it, then to me, that, it's on them, so.
Well, but it's not a us or them.
No, it's not, but it's.
I'm the one that's proposing that the two boards do this.
I guess the preferences, to Joe's point, co-sponsoring will be fine, they take the lead, in terms of timing, that's how we're.
As long as they're willing to do that, then that's fine.
I'll talk to the chairman.
They make the presentation.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure they won't have a problem with that.
And again, they're gonna go in front of that little mini group and let them, again, defend what the benefit is.
That's true, yeah.
I'm not trying to be smart, I'm just saying, it's just.
That's what they do.
If you have multiple articles to continually make a name, that's all.
So, the board's, so the board's amenable to the concept, I'll talk to the, I'll talk to ConCom.
I mean, especially in that, coming from them, in terms of what the protections are and stuff, I think it would be much better than someone on the planning board, we're not, we're not the ones that are doing it, so.
All right.
But we can certainly co-sponsor.
I'll talk to them and take it to them next month.
Okay, number eight, ZBA variance for the Milford Senior Center.
60 North Bow Street, the applicant requests a variance to construct a 16 by 16-foot wood frame gazebo, basically in the backyard. It's being proposed within the required 20-foot side yard setback. The gazebo is to be six feet from the north property line, where 20 feet's required. The gazebo will be located off of the rear patio area, between the patio and the Upper Charles Trail. There are fence, there are fence and screening along the north property line, adjacent fourplex, which is the closest structure at, actually, it's in the rear of 54 North Bow Street, is over 50 feet north of the proposed gazebo location, so I'd recommend the board forward a favorable report to the zoning board appeals. There's a site plan attached, as well as an enlargement of the actual corner of it where the gazebo is located, so.
They can't move this a little closer to the gazebo?
I was just gonna say, why can't they, why can't they push it away?
Yeah.
You'll have to ask them.
Well, they're not here, so I have to ask you.
I, I guess, you know, for as much as we, we give the residents, I don't know that the town gets a, gets a bye, I mean, I'm looking at it saying, jeez, it certainly looks like they could, I don't, I don't have a problem along the, what would be the, the east, east property line, they can get, they can get as close as they want along that edge, but I don't understand why they need to be that close to the other one.
I don't either, and that's why I said if.
I think they have a garden or something there, just south of where they wanna put this, I don't know, Mike, Mike threw it up for us.
I mean, I guess if this were a resident of the town of Milford coming to me, I'd, I'd say, I'd say no, because you're, you're making no effort to try to meet town zoning, because you're the town, I don't think it gives you a pass, I think you gotta at least try to make it, so, I guess.
The only additional question I have, Joe, is if you had a patio, I'm, I'm thinking about ground stability, to get up onto a gazebo, why would I want, why would I theoretically walk on grass or perhaps unstable ground to get to a gazebo, when I could be for the benefit of the patio, for, for just, for stability?
That, that I certainly can't answer, but.
Well, no.
I mean, I, I, you know, I, I think we tend to try to be as accommodating to the town as possible, I think the town needs to be.
'Cause I think that, I think there's, there should have been a little more effort, or at least they can at least explain to us why.
Somebody should come to you, yeah.
I'll take a position of no vote, but I'm not gonna, I won't go unfavorable, and I can't go favorable either, 'cause I, I don't understand why.
No votes.
Yeah, but, when are they going to the zoning board, tomorrow?
There is.
They're gonna say, so, you want me to do?
I mean, it, it's gonna be their decision anyway, but as far as I'm concerned, I believe we said, I, I make a recommendation we send an unfavorable to the zoning board, because I believe that they, they, they should at least make an effort to try to maximize the, the impact to the side yard, the rear yard, well, what I'll call the rear yard, even though I know this is two side yards.
That's right.
Is, is, is fine, but I think they could, they could get away from the six feet on the, on the one side.
How about maybe an unfavorable, unless they move.
Exactly.
Well, that's fine, too.
Why don't we just, well, I don't, greater effort should have been made to push it from.
Again, that's the thing, we just.
From the fourplexes on the other side.
Unfavorable on the position that it is, but if it was brought back further away from the side yard.
You're using a lot of words that the zoning board isn't gonna pick up on.
That's right.
If it was, how's this?
Likely to do it anyways.
Sending unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board, unless they were to maximize the distance to the north property line.
Second.
That, Karen?
I think so.
Right.
Unless they maximize the distance to the property line.
From the north property.
From the north property.
Okay.
The bike paths behind.
Any further discussion?
No.
If not, all those in favor, are they unfavorable?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah, Mr. Five.
Pat, could you do the next three, just read my report, and I'll, I'll be right back.
ZBA for 180 variance for 182 Purchase Street.
Camilla Rose, the applicant requests a variance to maintain a 16 by 16 shed that has been placed within the 25-foot required rear yard setback. The two parcels that make up the site have been merged by zoning. The application.
Camilla Rose. The applicant requests a variance to maintain a sixteen by sixteen shed that has been placed within the twenty-five foot required rear yard setback. The two parcels that make up the site have been merged by zoning. The application form is incomplete, and an accurate survey locating the shed has not been provided. Also, there appears to be no hardship relating to the land in question that would warrant the grant of a variance. Therefore, Larry is recommending unfavorable will be sent to the ZBA.
Yeah, just... They just put it there.
They plunked it down. That's it.
Yeah.
Anything close? Well, we just saw that in the gazebo.
I, I move unfavorable report sent to the zoning board.
Second.
Moved in second, we forward an unfavorable report to the zoning board.
May I have your letter?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? unanimous of five.
Yeah, I need the other one, too.
Yep.
There you go.
Okay, now the ZBA special permit for 3 Casey Drive.
Give me one second.
Yep.
We got, give you all the time in the world.
See, that's right, my hand, sorry. How's that, kids? Stand by. You good, man?
John's got a whole factory.
Number ten.
They need to pay for clothes. You got a whole, you got a whole factory.
Thomas Scamato. The applicant requests a special permit to establish a supplemental apartment in the existing single-family dwelling. The proposed supplemental apartment is to be in the remodeled basement and will be consistent of three rooms for occupancy by the applicant's mother. No additions are being proposed to this dwelling. Therefore, Larry is recommending favorable to the ZBA.
What's it, a walk-off?
Is Scamato still alive?
It's for his mother. It was in with the father.
I have the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Although, when my mother passed away, nobody can use the apartment.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah. So, that's...
Well, you can use it.
That's part relatives can use.
Oh, you can use it when you gotta wanna get away from your wife. I mean, you can use it.
I do. I do.
All right, then. I'm sure you're down there watching the Red Sox. I mean, don't pretend like it's going to waste.
When they, when they, uh, record the special permit, that's, that goes on the...
Yes, that's part of it.
I'll make a motion for favorable.
I'll second that.
Moved in second, we have a favorable, sent a favorable report to the, uh, zoning board. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five. Okay. Getting number one. Special permit for four, uh, East Charles Street.
The applicant requests a special permit to replace the existing single-family dwelling with a new single-family dwelling on the non-conforming 10,890 square foot subject property located in the RB Residential District. During a recent remodeling of the existing dwelling, it was discovered the structural conditions of the house were too severe to warrant repair. Complete demolition is the only logical solution. However, because the lot is undersized in the RB zone, a special permit is needed from the ZBA. The new two-story, single-family dwelling will be reorientated to be better situated on the lot, will meet our required setbacks, and be similar to other dwellings in the immediate neighborhood. Therefore, Larry is recommending favorable to the ZBA.
Who's this?
East Charles.
Charles.
It's gotta be over here.
Off a brewery, down that way. Go all the way down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Down, take a right, go all the way to the end, you take a left, and the right is on East Charles. By the same cemetery.
That's cool.
I know where that is, yeah.
Cemetery?
Yeah.
Well, I'll know sooner or later.
Yeah.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Hold on, I just wanna look at this first.
Certainly. It's a beat-up.
Yeah, actually, it, it's actually a better situation, really.
Oh, yeah.
Right up against the property line now, so at least we'll get, we'll get it pulled away a little bit.
Et cetera.
It's beat up.
Motion for favorable to the ZBA.
To you?
Yes, me. Second. I just need your letter. Just your letter?
Yeah. We're moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five. Number twelve.
I don't know where Larry left, but...
One and nine.
Last but not least.
A gentleman, I figured that was your call.
Sorry.
This is a resounding discussion on Midway Road and Birch Street.
No, we can't do that because of Amazon.
A swarm of bees. No, I, I, I don't. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Duncan, I'm Tom Reedy, an attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of Cumberland Farms.
All right, you got that, Karen?
I'm sorry, tell us the answer.
Do you have a stack on your shoulder? I don't know if I do, but I can, I'll get to the, I know Larry has my contact information.
He was introducing himself.
I'm sorry, could you...
Very well, of course I can. Sure. Tom Reedy, R-E-I-D-Y. Pretty good. Uh, an attorney with Bacon Wilson out of...
And just for the record, before I speak up, I might not speak, Jim Bernardino with Bowler Engineering, uh, out of Southboro, Massachusetts.
You're a little closer.
I'm a little closer. I'm down the road. It's a car.
Oh, look at you.
I'm a professional.
Not the lawyer. Can I cling a jacket? No cards?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh... Would you lose them at the courthouse door?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just chase ambulances. They're all after, see what I get.
Fill out of your pocket.
Uh, so, uh, we had met with Larry, uh, back in April to talk about this site. So, this site's at the corner of, uh, Midway Road and Birch here in Milford, and, and it's actually two sites. So, uh, the one where I think it's, uh, Richard's warehouse is, um, the restaurant, and then behind it, we've got, uh, a parcel of land here that's actually zoned RB. So, this is CB, this is RB right here. It's a vacant third of an acre of land. And so, the discussion went with Larry. We had a layout, and, um, it, it required a zone change. And so, the discussion was, is there any way to redesign this site? So, Cumberland Farms would look to put a, uh, forty-three-hundred-square-foot retail convenience store with automobile filling stations, understanding restrictions, and working about self-service, provided that you have one of the islands, so two fueling positions actually having an attendant there. I'll tell you, they don't do it in any of their other sites. This would be the only one, because they've gotta do it. Even with that, they're still interested in coming to this location. So, Larry asked us to go back and look at a redesign. Um, we looked at a redesign without the zone change, but it came to be that the only way that this project could go forward with, would be with a zoning map amendment. So, um, I had another discussion with Larry. He suggested making some changes to the site to get the driveway to line up with the assisted living facility across the street, across Birch Street, um, to make sure a truck... Jim, is this thing gonna fall over?
They always give me the, I'm on the broken leg.
That's why they give you business.
That's right, that's right. Okay.
You only have one or the other faulty equipment.
You didn't choose the right one.
I do have a backup.
Um, and so, we went and we redesigned it. So, this is the zone line here, and we're looking to put, uh, so retail is not allowed in, um, the RB zoning district. Now, there are gas stations, but we're keeping the gas station use as far away from that RB as possible. Uh, this is what would encroach in that RB, uh, zoning district. So, we wanted to, obviously, what we would do is we would need to go to Fall Town Meeting to try to get some zone change. But if the planning board's not gonna recommend it, then we're not even gonna be able to go forward. So, really, this is for an informal discussion to try to give us some guidance of what is this viable or not? Uh, and if so, are there other restrictions? I know Larry had some good suggestions about maybe carving off a piece back here to make sure that at least this area was permanently preserved or, or somehow remained vegetated. You'll see that there's only, at least in this design, a stormwater basin right here, uh, and then you've got that, the, the encroaching building, so... I'm having to answer questions or...
Yeah, just out of curiosity, that doesn't seem to be the same plan that you sent me. That's not what the planning board has as a reference map.
You have...
That's an older...
Yes, yes.
In terms of the driveway location. What I had, uh, from, from the get-go in, in this conversation, I had made it clear that I wasn't going to recommend that, uh, a zone change. Um, but they were insistent that they wanted to keep looking at the site, so I said, well, if you're gonna keep looking at the site, look at moving that driveway on Birch Street as far south as you can, because even with that, you're never gonna get in and out of there. Uh, this is the, probably the worst place in town to put a gas station. So, I can't, I can't recommend, uh, a zone change for the extra lot there to try and facilitate this when it's not even gonna work, even if it were rezoned. So, why even encourage it? My recommendation is that you not support the zone change. Um, but the, the plan that's attached that they had emailed me has a better, uh, site design and layout than the one that's on the board there. Uh, but either way, it, it's, um, you know, just lining the driveway up with the, uh, access to, um, um, the care facility across the street, uh, isn't getting it far enough away from the intersection.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, and, and this what makes it difficult, is the usage itself, I think, is difficult at that location. What makes me even further, further worried is the fact that I don't know at that location, we would want people taking a left turn from 109 into the site. We know how successful we've been at being able to eliminate that at, at the, the new stop and shop location where people drive through signs that say, "Don't take a left turn," and "Do not act..."
Drive over curd.
I mean, we, we've got signs, they're written in English, there's ones that, that just say, "Don't do it," that's just a sign. Neither one of them work. Uh, people still gonna do whatever they want, and I don't know that that's a location, considering the traffic on 109, that we wanna take and have people trying to take a left turn. And if we try to make them go to, to Birch Street, we know they wouldn't, 'cause they'll just try to make the left turn wherever they're gonna make it. Um, so, I, I, I mean, I, I understand the, you know, certainly, we wanna be, um, sympathetic to the, the current owner to make sure that this is a developable site to some level, but this type of usage makes it somewhat difficult, because I, 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 I worry about what it's gonna do to the traffic.
Yeah, the site has historically been a restaurant, which is the perfect use for that corner, because the peak hours for the restaurant are, are off-peak for the rest of the traffic patterns.
Yeah.
Uh, as well as being totally different than a gas station.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, again, looking at the current owner and saying, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't think we can force them into having a restaurant or stuff, and, and trying to be sympathetic in terms of it probably, again, that zone line was drawn as a line at some point in time that was somewhat nebulous as to why it's exactly there, and would make sense to be somewhat behind it, but in terms of the usage, I'm, I'm significantly worried.
Yeah.
I mean, if it, if it were, if it were some other usage, I might be able to get behind it, but a gas station at this location, it makes it very difficult for me to try to get behind.
But once you rezone your, your parcel,
I know.
uh, then you're inviting anybody to put a gas station.
I, I...
Cumberland Farms could put their store on the site right now.
Yeah. Um, yeah, no, I understand that, and, and that, that becomes the issue with the, you know, how do we, how do we help the owner of that particular site, but how do we control it? I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I think to that point, you already helped the owner by changing the zoning to CB, 'cause for years, it had been residential.
Yes.
Right.
So, but at any rate, I, just, just to be clear, we had been discussing it for quite a while, and, and I wasn't, um, hiding my, uh, my position on the issue from the get-go.
That's right.
So, he's not surprised hearing all that.
No, again, as far as the Cumberland Farms, I'm, I'm not, definitely not against the Cumberland Farms site, but I am like...
Yes.
I get serious questions of putting a site in this spot here. It's, uh, we have so many traffic problems in that area now, that, uh...
Yeah, I mean, if there were, if there were, if 109 was, was done and it was, you know, there was a median in there and stuff, I may, I may have, and, and, you know, we had a left turn lane to get down Birch Street and turn in, I may, I may not be as adverse to it, but in the current condition of 109, I think it makes it very difficult.
Yeah, and Broad Street's right there to the east, so that'd be a close...
Believe me, it was something to get, even to get the area changed to CB was a tough, was tough, because over the years, the residents in the area were fighting, uh, any zone change at all, so... But again, it, it just...
The writing seems on the wall.
Yeah, it's, I hate to say it, but again, I mean, we can't stop it, but...
Right, right.
We do, but we do make a recommendation to the town, town meetings.
We can stop it.
I mean, and that's, and that's why we're here, and I mean, Larry's been great since, we're going through the iterations, trying to figure out if it is viable. They do have it under contract, if there is a way, and Larry had some great suggestions, but I think they do only go so far to a certain extent. Um, you know, without the zone change, they probably will abandon this site. They may look, I don't even know if there's another layout on that site with those additional traffic controls that you had spoken about to, so you don't have to go through the zone change. Um, but I think we, we get the message, and we'll be able to at least take that back and let them know.
It's a shame, because...
Let the decision-makers make it.
Because on the way from Mendon, all the way down to the Shell Station just before 495, there's not a gas station. There's only one gas station on the right-hand side. It's small. It's a miniature.
It's, it's challenging to get in at best.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's, it would be there, but it's just...
It's a good location, at least conceptually, but I think there's some other thing to that.
Is this smaller than the one in Hope Dale?
Uh, yeah, I think so. I forget, um...
It has to be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think the one in Hope Dale is the fifty-two.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
But I remember in Hope Dale, they had bought up three properties, and then they had to go buy another property because they couldn't fit laundry.
So, I had done, yeah, it is hard, but I, so I had done, I had done the one in Hope Dale. When, when we looked at that other site after Larry, when you and I spoke, that's what they were afraid about, is that maybe that, if we had used that dry cleaner site, it might cannibalize the one in Hope Dale. So, that's why they stuck with this one, 'cause they thought it was, um, far enough apart. But, yeah, I think the, the building in Hope Dale is the larger model. They've scaled it back. Now, they've got something a little bit smaller, but that makes no difference.
But it's still, the site's still bigger than this one.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I wouldn't be so. Yeah, they do have two under contract, and then there was word that Dunkin' Donuts was gonna go across the street, so I think Cumberland acquired the one right next to the railroad tracks and made it bigger.
That piece of property was very upset.
Dunkin' Donuts all of a sudden, "We're not going there." Yeah, yeah, no, it's... So... Okay. We appreciate, no, we appreciate the time, uh, and the thought and the entertainment, so... Maybe we'll be back with something else, um, but we'll be sure to talk to Larry personally.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Okay, uh, before that, I just, uh... Yeah, I know, I just quick, quickly, I got a call from, uh, some residents up on, uh, Beaver Street complaining about, uh, Amazon. And it seems, well, it seems that on the weekends, he, he thought they were toot, they were tooting the horns. He thought the doors were activated by the horns. So, I called up, uh, Amazon, I asked them, "Push the dumpsters." They're, they're banging them at five in the morning. I talked, I did talk to the gentleman from, uh, was here from Amazon. Uh, the dumpsters are, they're supposed to pick them up between seven and nine, so they won't be picking them up at five. And the only problem he's seeing with the doors is they, their safety, uh, regulations require them to toot the horn before they drive through the door. But...
They do that every morning?
Yeah, but...
Not just on weekends, every morning?
Yeah, but, but the, but the people who called up said that on Sa- you know, on Saturday and Sunday, it shouldn't be, so... He's gonna talk to them, he's gonna get back to me, and I'll get back, uh, to him. I just wanted to let you know what, uh, what they did. The guy was, he, the gentleman was very good about getting back to me and doing it. That's gonna be a, that's gonna be a problem because of their safety regulations and the horn blowing and it's something...
Smash the lights and do the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
They can have an internal beacon light that's activated from their headlights.
With all the technology...
With all the technology...
Yeah.
You would think they would find something.
There is, there's other alternatives.
Well, we haven't looked yet, so it looks...
There's other alternatives.
Looks...
Listen.
Now, you know. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Lena. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.